And I may have to break away because I have a badly injured dog and I don't know if we have a vet in town.
All right, well, we'll try to move quickly then.
Okay.
All right. Then we have, it sounds like we have quorum now, so thank you so much, David. All right, it's 1:30 a.m. here on October 22nd, 2025, and we will call this meeting for the South Central Regional Transit District Board Meeting to Order. And if, for those of us on the phone and those of us in the person, if you're in person that are able to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, then we'll move on to a roll call, if you wouldn't mind, David.
Yes, thank you. Work through my sheet here. Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
President.
Trustee Gerald Navarez.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Flores.
Present.
And trustee Powi.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to item number four on our agenda, which is approval of the agenda. If I can get a motion to approve?
So moved by Flores.
All right, I have a motion by Counselor Flores.
Navarez.
Thank you. We have a second by trustee Navarez. Thank you. All right, if there are any comments or any changes to the agenda?
No.
All right, not hearing or seeing any, then we'll have a roll call for the approval of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Navarez.
Yes.
Counselor Flores.
Yes.
And trustee Powi.
Yes.
All right, and with that, our agenda is approved. Thank you, David. All right, well, on to item number five, which is the public input. Are there any members of the public that are going to jump into the chambers last minute? Not seeing any, so then we'll move on to agenda item number six, which is to approve the S C R T D meeting minutes of July 23rd, 2025. Can I get a motion and a second to approve, please? All right, I have a motion by.
So moved by Flores.
I have a motion by Counselor Flores. I will second the motion. Are there any changes, recommended or suggested changes to the meeting minutes of July 23rd, 2025? All right, not hearing or seeing any, so if there's no public input, for that I'll ask for a roll call for the meeting minutes of July 23rd, 2025.
All right. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Navarez.
Yes.
Counselor Flores.
Yes.
Trustee Powi.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those meeting minutes are approved for zero. Agenda item number seven now, it's the approval of the S C R T D board meeting minutes of September 24th, 2025. I get a motion, a second to approve?
So moved by Flores.
All right, I have a motion by Counselor Flores. I'll second the motion. Board members, are there any questions, comments, or updates to the meeting minutes from September 24th? All right, not hearing or seeing any, then I'll ask for a roll call to approve the meeting minutes from September 24th, 2025.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Navarez.
Yes.
Counselor Flores.
Yes.
And trustee Powi.
Yes.
The item is approved.
Thank you. All right, then we'll move on to agenda item number eight, which is the Executive Director's Report by Mr. Armijo.
Good afternoon. This is David Armijo, Executive Director. As with all things, this is the beginning of a new season, and for us, it's the beginning of a new fiscal year for the national transit database. So our transit ridership that we do that goes with our federal funding is scheduled between fiscal year that starts every October 1st and ends on September 30th, which in fact would have been last month. So now we have data for the 12-month period. I know I've been keeping you up to date from month to month, long away or quarterly, but I can go through a little bit of that. But also I want to put this presentation in context of, all right, our numbers are going up, but how do we keep them going up? And what's the value of that? What are some of the milestones? What are our strategic priorities of how we're doing this? So this first one is the global presentation. I have several, only about six slides. This one kind of shows you in the context of the last several years. It also compares the ridership for the last year, most specifically, we did a little bit better than when I projected a couple of months ago, when I thought we'd do about 160, 162. We actually did 164,722, which is a ridership gain of 24% from last year's level of 132,818 trips. From a regional status, that's pretty much unprecedented. I know Las Cruces is doing very well within their system as well. But for most transit agencies that are rural like us, pretty unusual. We've also been able, and this slide shows the growth on a quarterly basis for each of those last, I believe, eight years' worth of service. And so, you know, obviously very dynamic growth. The key question now is where do we go from here? So as a former planner, I have to look at the good and the bad. So sometimes even though, oh, 774 sounds great, but let's look at the last year. Although the ridership of 25 is in green, if you track the ridership, you can see how strong our ridership was in those first six months going into the winter, which is really unusual. The second six months, things started to level off. So actually, our growth right now is about 6% or 8%, not quite 24%. And so the reality is what happens next? Well, we have some plans and I'm going to go into that. So don't catch your chickens before they hatch, as the saying goes. You know, these are great, but you have to do something to keep that process going forward.
And David, I think, can you go back real quick? And I'm just curious, when we look at this, you know, I know you said like the first six months and then it levels out, but I think it makes a lot of sense, and maybe I'm just thinking. Because when I look at those historic numbers through the summer, you don't have people, kids going to school, you don't have. It, the weather's a little nicer out, so, you know, maybe they're walking a little bit. I don't know, you know what I mean? There's probably a contributory factor, but I think the students and kids is probably a big piece of it, because I know we do have ridership that go, that utilize it to go to NMSU, to DACC, or to any of the other educational institutions.
And you're absolutely correct. I think June and July is an example of that. You see the drop. August, kids are starting to go back to school, and September, so we're moving forward. We, I've only looked at the first, almost the first three weeks. We're in it, kind of in the third week now. But the first half of October looks very good. If we're right on track where we were in September, I think we'll actually go higher. We've been hitting roughly 14,000 or more passengers per trip the last two months. I'm projecting we're going to go over 15,000. But it'll still be a modest growth, you know, so it's like when you get to a certain level, it gets harder. But we have a, we have a plan. So this is another good chart. This really shows the dynamic of what's happened in this service area. And if you go back to the beginning, when there was a lot of debate about the value of having this, the problem we had in that debate is we only had five buses. You know, we're growing to almost 30 buses now. And so with more people, more resources, this is what you get. So the investment is paying off, and I think that's probably one of the statements that should come out of that slide, but we're not done yet. So what are the drivers? What's driving the growth? Well, certainly the free fares made a big difference, but like everything else, it flattens out. That just takes care of the people you already have. How do you get new people to ride the bus? So to do that, we had to look at other options. So we added the weekend service in the late, early spring, so about March. So that's just growing. I was watching the ridership growth the other day. I'll do a separate report on that. But the ridership, so example, if you look at the weekend service, about 20% to 22% of our ridership is just on the weekend compared to weekday. Now, once upon a time, we didn't do any weekend service, so that's already a growth upon itself. It would fit into those categories we had. But a lot of people don't yet know we're running service on weekends, so we're constantly getting feedback on that. And we'll have to get more specific into our marketing for that. Some buses are doing better than others. Ironically, the copper is one of our best routes coming through Las Cruces and through Macia on to its end game when it gets to the New Mexico Transit and it turns around and goes back. So that's, that's, that's pretty good, because they're, they're holding their own against some of the other routes, the green route, Hatch, and so on. Then you look at other options. What can we do with regional connectivity? Well, we have some plans right now. We, we did increase last month the turquoise line to do an hourly service. That's a, turquoise is in Chaparral. And so that, that, that's a big deal, because when people know it's every hour, they don't really have to look at the schedule. They know it's going to be on the top of the hour, they can kind of do it. So just having an extra bus, because we already had peak hour service in the afternoon, so now it's a whole day. We're looking at doing the same thing for the yellow route down in Paso Salomón Park. Ironically, that bus only runs every 80 minutes. You would think for a route that carries so many people, but we've started to have some standing loads, and so we're going to add some additional peak hour service, not the whole day, but we'll take that up to every 40 minutes. So that's, that's a huge paradigm shift for people who are waiting long periods. All of a sudden, now they get a bus within the hour, not even every hour, but within the hour. We think that's going to make a big difference. That's adding a bus in the morning, a bus in the afternoon. The other route on the Chaparral turquoise line, we added a bus in the morning. So actually, these are fairly inexpensive costs, because we already have the buses, there's no capital. The operators, we're bidding those out as a single shift, eight, four hours in the morning, four hours in the afternoon. Those are easy for us to fill out, and it's very cost-effective. Other things we're doing is promotions. You know, we've still got to keep pushing who we are and that we're here. It's amazing that some people still don't know. I'm getting a lot of calls, because unfortunately, my admin, I get those emails on the weekend. So I'm getting all these people from Sierra County wanting to figure out, are you running service on Saturday? Well, no, we don't. Well, when do you ride it? And so I'm pushing them all to Google Maps, because Google Maps is 24/7. You can get your schedules on the blue route anytime. And Nick, your connections to the green route at Hatch, which is the second part of the question. So we did solve part of the problem for them, and they just had to figure out what to do on the weekend, but they do have that service during the week. So those things we're trying to do more naturally with Facebook, social media, advertising, and whatnot. So what are the key operational highlights? We've got a lot on our plate, as you know. Infrastructure, you know, we're continuing to work on capital projects. We'll start this coming weekend. I know it's a small project, so Phase 3 in Anthony, but we'll be putting in concrete, so when you come up to the facility, instead of being on the rocks, you can actually park on concrete. Parking lot is, was done two years ago, and then, of course, we took the facility. Last year, we upgraded the garage. So piece by piece, a little bit of money, we get all these things done. Other service enhancement, I just went through some of those. We do have some good ones. I should also mention, we're working with the city of Sanlón Park, the city of El Paso. So we're moving our bus stop closer to the facility where the other buses are, so people can get out of the bus without having to cross the street. They can go into the facility, use the restrooms, whatever else, and make their connections. We think that aspect and our sign actually being present will also help attract more ridership. So, but more importantly, I think, is the fact that it makes it easier for the riders. So it's those kind of investments. Regional connectivity, doing a lot more work with the other governments.
Counselor Flores, yes. Yes, please, go ahead. No, 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 I was. And you might, the microphone, if you don't mind, so.
So office growth is absolutely wonderful. I wonder, do we keep any stats on how businesses are doing? I would imagine that the economy has gone up in a lot of our, you know, communities that are serviced by S C R T D.
I don't have that information. I would probably defer that to some of our economics people in town, the city and the county. In fact, I didn't even throw it back to the commissioner here. I'm sure you're getting advice from your people on how that's happening for jobs. I just don't have that data.
That would be, that would be a good, because that, because I think that there had, I would, I would think that there would be, I'm not going to assume, but I would think that there would be growth in terms of, you know, all that inner, inner community. I think, I don't have any, I don't think we have any specific data, as we're still working on building out our economic development team, but I think one of the suggestions, and this comes from, I know I've heard it from the community, which was, you know, how do you, how do you advertise using small businesses? Because I think if you're looking at small businesses that are along, near the, near the stops or near the routes, you know, we, it's like, how do we potentially work together where, you know, maybe we have, you know, we can advertise, or at least allow like some sponsorship from them, but in return, they agree to have very prominent information about the S C R T D routes. Yeah. So, or on their, on their Facebook page, social media, so that way they can say, ride public transit to our business. Or it could also be on the side of the buses.
Sure, sure.
And, yeah, and then keep tabs on, or gather that information, not keep tabs, but get information from the merchants. Who.
Who helped us get that? That'd be interesting, yeah.
And I, I think that that's a good thing. It's a good thing to focus on, in my humble opinion. Thank you.
Well, let me pick up one more point here. Our fleet expansion. We did pick up two vans and two smaller buses this summer, and those are the ones we're using for these expansion plans. We already have the Gilligs for the yellow, because that's the bus they'll be on. We're starting to put more Gillig, even electric buses, coming up into Anthony vis-à-vis our Sanlón Park facility. So we're running that line coming through there. As time goes by, we can get more, well, we have another charger we're going to get located there. We'll start doing more connectivity into Las Cruces with the electric buses, but part of that's on hold until we get the Venus, our next bus facility built. But yeah, eventually, there'll be a little more of that. Those buses should be very helpful to us as we go forward. And then last, I already missed it, but we did pick up special funding. I mentioned it last month on the East Mesa. So we will be adding another bus service in Las Cruces. So we call that the Magenta Line. So I pushed that back a little bit and put the priority on moving on the yellow line to get that done now, sooner than later, but we would hope to have that, that line in place in November. Those, those three different implementations of service should add the near 22% growth that I'm hoping we can maintain for the coming year, because our ultimate goal is we want to get to about 200,000 rides. I think that's a nice target in the near term. Yes?
This is Ivan Flores. So, but we already have buses going out to the East Mesa, can you know?
No.
We don't, we haven't had any.
One bus, Route 8, I believe it's, I always get confused, Route 8 or Route 6, but your bus only goes to, pretty much goes to the high school.
The high school.
It's only on the, on the Frontage Road.
Wow.
You know, so when you come back to Sonoma, then you get into normal service. There's no service going further out. So we're looking at going all the way out to Butterfield Trail, which would take us all the way out. We had thought about going to Oregon. I think, you know, I decided that's a bridge too far. Later, we can expand to Oregon, because those community centers out there on the county side are highly needed, and then we'll run service further in.
Yeah.
We'll also be looking at whether that route can then become the local route and allow us to reduce the distance on the green route, so that it may be, it ends either at the mall, or it ends at Dona Anna County, and you pick the savings of time up, so we can start looking to build another trip in there. So that, this is all about back and forth, back and forth, trading off resources and time and cost to try to get the maximum thing. One of the things that we've, we've heard from our ridership, it'll come back when we do the 10-year plan presentation in the next couple of months, is that people want more service, you know, either in range to places that we're not getting to, or they want it in service frequency. And so right now, we're shifting the frequency, because now we have the buses, we have the resources. Adam's going to go through the budget here in a bit. So we're in a much better position now than we've ever been financially.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Flores. And I, and I think the one thing I'd be kind of curious is you're, you know, talking about and seeing, because I think, as, as you mentioned, kind of within the regional connectivity and how we connect in with metro, with Roadrunner, like, you know, is there potential, like you said, if you're able to cut off some of those routes in the city of Las Cruces, because we drop off right where Roadrunner picks up, and then they're having, if they have a constant flow that helps and connects to Sonoma, and that might be, you know, that allow us to be able to do those additional routes outside where they don't service, so.
Correct.
It's like, it's funny to have these conversations, because it's, it's almost about, as we're seeing the ridership increases, you have more, like you're saying, the more routes you have, I know sometimes the buses aren't always full, but to me, it's always about whether people know, oh, I, you know, I, I know I'm going to be able to catch the bus, and it's not going to be inconvenient for me, so I'm just going to do it, because it doesn't cost me a thing, and it's easier to do it. And I think that's what it comes, you know, when you start looking at larger, what's that? And not, and not just the economics, for me, well, economics for the, for the, for the residents, but I think even like, I think of my time working or going to school in Boston, or working in other cities that have good transit systems, it was about the idea that I don't need a car, because I know I'm going to be able to catch one of those buses. If I miss this one, I'll catch the next one. And it just changes the perspective, and, but it goes back to, I know we've had some conversations many years ago, when people, you know, they, they may not always use it, but if they know it's there, they, they have that as a fallback position. But I think as we start to increase the, the riders, the, the frequency, more and more people will do it, because I know I've heard more and more people saying, this is awesome.
Well, thank you. Well, you know, I still remember the calls we got eight years ago. One particular call was a young man living in Chaparral that was coming off the high school down the street, off of, I can't remember the streets anymore. But our bus would come through and get. But our bus would come through and getting from the high school back to the transfer center, but that's not where he wanted to go. He wanted to be dropped off at the McDonald's, so he could, and he could get picked up later because, you know, we weren't going to run bus service long enough for a ride home. But that, so that was a different trip. So he actually came in on the turquoise, but he was actually using the purple now to get the other way. So I found that interesting, come in the turquoise, then do the purple. So, you know, our, our young people are incredible what they can do with limited resources. So for us, the only thing we had to do is put up a bus stop. We did that. And so this kid got to go to his first job, you know, as a 15 or 16-year-old. So I don't know what the value of that is, and I know it's anecdotal, but there's a lot of things that we do that we don't even know about, or we hear about from our operators, that really are making a difference with people. So you're right, it's not about the full bus, and as long as we can keep that in mind, know that we're doing our best to be efficient, but on the other hand, we're also trying to provide opportunities.
If I may, yeah, when I was undergraduate in Sacramento, in fact, when I moved from Los Angeles to Sacramento, I sold my car so that I could buy the bus fare, or the airfare, and pay tuition in Los Angeles. And then I didn't drive all through law school either, so I didn't drive for years. It was just local transportation. The cable cars used to be available, not anymore. Now it's like $20 to take a ride, but we used to get on free because we'd jump on and then jump off as soon as they came to collect. I think the statute of limitations has passed on that.
You're probably okay.
On that misdemeanor. But, but at any rate, that, that's, that's really true. Students really don't want, I certainly, you know, I didn't want a car. I didn't want to worry about parking and maintenance of the car, yada, yada, blah, blah. So, yeah, I think it's really a wonderful idea, David.
Good, well, thank you. I'll finish up with next steps. So really, I think the big thing coming is the 10-year plan. So when we did the last 10-year plan, it was about five years ago, we were kind of in the midst of COVID. We didn't get as much outreach as we were getting disco round, we're doing better. So we had to do the best we could, what we had. We, we were surprised that the projects that we identified, we had actually accomplished all but one in those intervening four years. And that one that we didn't complete was the one getting some kind of bus service or connection to some, that's Sunland Park, the BIA up on the hill, so, you know, doing that whole thing. So we have plans for it, we have a route, we just haven't initiated it. That's a financial issue that we'll have to address as we come forward, but it, it will definitely be in the next 10-year plan. But the 10-year plan will probably now look more distinctly at other options that we would never have taken into account, but we're trying to look 10 years out, not five, 10 years out. So there's some interesting things I think you'll see on that. Somebody?
Was that Meiji Powi, or Trustee Powi, or is that?
I'm sorry.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we didn't catch you, sorry about that. Thank you, Council.
I'm still here.
All right. Well, I should wrap up so we can get to the approval, so she can do that.
Yes, yeah.
So anyway, I'll leave it at that, but, so everything I've talked about is in these next steps. So we do have a plan going forward, we'll come back over the next few months with more updates. But we're optimistic and we're in the best, as you'll find in a minute, best fiscal position that we've ever been in. So it's just a matter of time to get these things done. With that, I'll conclude, thank you for your feedback.
All right, Trustee Nevades and Trustee Powi, did you have any questions before David concludes on his executive director report?
No, I didn't.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right.
David, so what was the email that you sent about the rail coming down to Las Cruces?
Thank you. That's not us, that's the state of New Mexico. So the state of New Mexico is in the process of updating their long-range rail plan, which they last presented that, God, almost seven years ago, seven or eight years ago. In fact, we were doing the commuter rail at the time, and we were included in their plan. The state has a very ambitious plan, but like a lot of things, it depends on money and political support along the corridor. They'd like to connect the El Paso, Southern New Mexico, going all the way up through to where they do have rail service up in the Albuquerque-Sanofi area, but eventually get this all the way up into Colorado. So we expect that presentation will be coming soon. I think Kevin, for the state New Mexico DOT will be, he may even come here, I'll certainly invite him. Like, well, like I said, it's very ambitious, but it's, it's a very well-thought-out plan, and so it's very interesting to see what steps are being taken to make that happen.
Okay, I just, I'm, it seems pretty unrealistic to me, but, but considering that in 19, when I went to nursing school in 1966, I took the train from Engle to Chicago and from Chicago to Baltimore. So I did get the train in New Mexico, and we did have rail service that was in Engle and went down. So it's, it's like, okay, this is a trip to the past.
Absolutely, Trustee Powi. I think one of the things, it's interesting, because while I know here in, in Las Cruces, we don't have the rail, rail service necessarily, but if you were to go west, Amtrak, I think, Amtrak runs through El Paso, and then, but, but you can catch the train to Los Angeles from Deming. I think it picks up on a Thursday. They have, they have a little, they have a little bench there with their, with their schedule. I think they pick up Thursday in Deming, and then they come back like on a Tuesday from Los Angeles. So it does exist through Amtrak, but it'd be kind of curious, I, I think we've seen, like we were talking, I think my time, exactly like you said, Trustee Powi, how, you know, I think in my time out east, I had driven the train from Boston to New York and to Washington DC, and it's a, it's a good means of transport, but it definitely, you know, it's, it's something that I think people need to be looking at, that maybe in the future.
Well, there's a train station, what, station in Las Cruces?
They don't go there, but they do, I was at the station last month.
Well, years ago, there was a train station though, and the train did go to Cruces.
Well, the El Paso's better station to get to, because they have a lady that comes in and she has burritos, so you can get some pretty good burritos for her. I've done that, on the train. All right, well, thank you. I guess we move on?
All right, yes, sir. All right, then we'll move on to our agenda item number nine, which is approve the resolution for the SERTD budget development and execution policy. If I can get a motion second to approve.
So moved, Nevades.
All right, I have a motion by Trustee Nevades, I will.
Second by.
A second by Council Flores.
Yes.
Mr., is it going to be you, David, or is this going to be?
Adam.
Adam, okay.
Adam's got it, thank you.
This here is just the policy that David and I and others, the staff, will use to develop our budget, the timing that goes into development, its execution, coming up with it, so that we meet the deadline by the end of the fiscal year approval, so that we can go ahead and get those uploaded into the various databases that they need to be set. Any questions?
Board members, any questions on the suggested policy? If I may, let me add just one point. One of the reasons we're coming forward now, we've, in fact, we'll come forward at some point in the future, we have a lot of policies. We've been developing a lot of policies recently in our preparation for a triennial review of the FTA. So this, this one comes from a recommendation from New Mexico DOT, and it was something that Adam and I drafted together, because we've been doing this, right? We just put it down on paper. This is the process we go through, and in fact, his next two presentations are part of this process. So, but we, we think sometimes this is a good idea to have a process, especially the day when both Adam and I are gone, we'll, we'll leave this behind. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, for, for the board members, if you do have either the hard copy or the electronic copy that was sent out, I think on page, at the end of page one, going into page two, I think what's, what's good about this is it outlines the, oh my God, you shared it on, on the screen here. So under, under the, the section number four, it does outline the phases and the different actions and the timeframe we should be doing this in. So that way, you know, we, we have that timeline to know what we should be doing in our various meetings, as well as, you know, even highlighting in, in section five, reporting requirements, as well as responsibilities in item six. And I know as we, as we go through and learn and get better, if there's any other things we learn along the way, we can adjust this where we need.
Always. Thank you.
Board members, any questions on the proposed policy?
All right. Do you have a resolution on this?
Yes, and we have a motion and a second for approval on the resolution.
So moved by Flores.
And we already had, sorry, sorry, Council Flores, we already have a motion.
Oh, do we?
Yeah.
Or we had a discussion?
Yeah, we had a motion, it was moved by Trustee Nevades and seconded by, by yourself. So if there are no questions or other comments, I'll ask David for a roll call, please.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Nevades.
Yes.
Commissioner Flores.
Counselor.
Counselor Flores.
Thank you.
We're promoting you.
Yes.
Trustee Powi.
Yes.
Thank you. It passes.
Thank you. Agenda item number 10 now is to approve a resolution of amendments to the annual budget by Mr. Shea. If I can get a motion and a second to approve, please.
So moved by Flores.
All right, I have a motion by Council Flores, a second by Trustee Nevades. All right, Adam, turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Board President and the members of the board. First of all, the purpose of this is to request approval of the budget amendment number one to the fiscal year 26 budget. It aligns revenues, expenditures and capital with first quarter activity, ensures continued fiscal transparency and funding alignment. The district financial position remains sound and balanced. Amendment number one increases the total fiscal year 26 budget by $788,847.23. Adjustments reflects confirmed state and federal funding commitments. Oh, thank you. Going over to the expenditures, there's only a few line items, subscriptions, interest expense and commercial loan. Those are items that, number one, the commercial loan that we had was not on the budget, but we needed on the budget so that we could pay it off. We had anticipated doing that last year. The interest is primarily what has been incurred on that commercial loan, and then the subscriptions, we've just had an increase in the number of items that we are accessing or using to enhance our business. The total increase is $64,862.23, and all increases offset by confirmed revenues, maintaining a balance, and the revised total expenditures would be $3,311,511.7. Pardon me. Any questions so far?
No.
Going down over to the income, is the total increase is $219,891.13. It includes confirmed New Mexico DOT section 5311 and New Mexico match allocations for operating revenues. This revised total revenue is mounting to $4,077,421.56. If you'll notice down there towards the bottom right, it includes the, or reduces that amount by the expenditures page by $3,311,511.7, giving us a net balance of $765,910.49, which will be useful when we go into the second half of the fiscal year, primarily to look at wages and the adjustment to the routes and other services that we provide. Any questions so far?
No, sir.
Okay, finally, capital adjustments to total increase of $504,093.87. This includes state legislative match funds for fleet and facility projects. The revised total capital is $9,732,186.20, positions SERTD for long-term infrastructure investment. Summary of the amendment is that expenditures is an increase of $64,862.23. Revenues, operating revenues, $219,891.13, and capital by $504,093.87. This gives a total budget for fiscal year 26 increases by $788,847.23 to $17,121,118.83.
Wait, you see the next presentation?
The request of the board is to approve the amendment number one for fiscal year 26, and authorize staff to incorporate adjustments into the official budget record and ensure continued compliance and transparency with funding sources. Amendment number one supports the SERTD strategic and financial goals and ensures accurate reflection of funding commitments and expenditures, maintains fiscal responsibility and operational readiness, and that concludes my presentation on the amendment.
Thank you, Adam. Board members, any questions on the proposed amendments? I, the only thing I have to say is I almost want to bring, invite our former colleague, Council Aikman, because we were always, he was always wanting to stress the need for a reserve, and, you know, I think at the time, we were under, definitely under $100,000 of, of a reserve at the time. So I think having to see where, how far you've come over the last few years, I think he'd, I think he'd be delighted to see that, so.
Took a lot of work, a lot of work.
Council Flores, did you have any questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for the approval of the amendment. If there are no other comments or questions, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Yes, okay. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Nevades.
Yes.
Councilor Flores.
Yes.
Trustee Powi.
Yes.
Thank you. It passes.
Excellent. We're on to agenda 11, thank you. It's to approve the resolution of the first quarter financials by Adam Shea. If I can get a motion and a second to approve, please.
So moved by Flores.
All right, a motion by Council.
Second, Nevades.
A second by Trustee Nevades. All right, Adam?
Thank you, sir. And again, welcome to the board meeting. Thank you for the opportunity to present the first quarter financials for fiscal year 2026. This report provides an overview of the district's financial performance and position as of September 30th, 2025. We will review key revenue and expenditure trends, assess progress and capital initiatives, and discuss our current cash position and liquidity outlook. Overall, the district remains on sound financial footing, with expenditures aligning closely to our adopted budget and revenues tracking as expected, pending several grant reimbursements scheduled for early in the second quarter. Today's objective is to ensure transparency, confirm our progress toward fiscal goals, and identify any areas requiring board attention or adjustment before the mid-year review. With that overview, let's begin with the summary. First of all, the South Central Regional Transit District closed the first quarter of fiscal year 26 in a stable cash position with positive revenue inflows and managed expenditures within budget expectations. The key highlights is that there's strong liquidity, healthy cash balances maintained under the revenue, the performance on track at 24.9% of budgeted grant revenue received, and under expenditures discipline, personnel and benefits tracking close to 27% of annual budget, a little over, but in line with quarterly pacing. As you can see, under the cash balances, we had a balance of $503,246.70 at the end of September. The next page brings us to our expenditures. Our expenditures amount to a total of $943,211.11. This is, shows a total amount of 28.5% This is, shows a total amount of 28.5% of the overall budget used at this point in time. This amounts to primarily, if you look at the year-to-dates, the personnel and employee benefits amount to about 27.3%. This is due to changes in service, increases in service that were not accounted for at the budget presentation or adoption at the beginning of the fiscal year. That will be adjusted in time once we go through the different changes that we're planning on doing up to mid-year. Under travel and maintenance, it amounts to about 27.6% of the budget. This amounts to van pool and maintenance of vehicles. We've had a couple of vehicles that have gone down that had an increased balance in maintenance that was applied. Under supplies, it amounts to 26.5%. And this is due to equipment and uniforms. We gained additional personnel, so we gained additional equipment for the facilities. Uniforms, we gained, again, new personnel, so new uniforms. Under contractual services, oh, correction, under insurance, total of 100%, as we have paid all our insurance for the fiscal year. Under contractual services, it's 25.9%. And this is due to signs and alarms. We had to have fire alarms, for instance, put in. And our drug and alcohol, as we've had our turnover, has been increased over this first quarter for some reason. And finally, under operating costs, 28.3%. This amounts to advertising for positions that we have increased as well as changed. Computer software, we are gaining new software at this point being incorporated for the facility as well as other aspects of the services that we offer. Subscriptions, memberships, and finally, utilities were increased due to, we didn't have a clear picture as far as what our electric grid, or our correction, our electric charging was going to cost us. So it was a little higher than we had anticipated. That concludes as far as the expenditures are concerned. Are there any questions to this point?
Board members, any questions on the expenditures? All right.
Okay, under operating revenue, total amount of 24.9% received in the quarter. It is a bit low. It's interesting. Our expenditures were a bit over the 25%, but our operating revenue was a little bit under. Did give us a little bit of a cushion still in our cash balances.
And I was going to ask if we can advance the page on the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you.
Got to remember to do that. Okay. The operating revenue, total amount of 132, well, $132,764.50 of our membership dues, completely 100% paid. Under the grants and MOUs, this is primarily 5311 and other 5303, 5304, other 5300 programs. We received 16.5% of the overall budget. Other source revenues, this is primarily 5307. We received 46.5% with $373,000 waiting to be pulled once we activate projects that are, those funds are earmarked for. And finally, other revenue, total amount of $59,057.86, 26.9% received. This is due to amounts that we received. It's interesting, when we got into BMO Bank or when BMO Bank bought out Bank of West, they changed our accounting or our funds and everything so that we pay interest on the amounts withdrawn, but we also get paid interest for the amounts balances that are still in the account. It's, I know, and I don't know why Bank of the West didn't offer this, but it is primarily because we are a government, considered a government entity. And it was particular special accounts. Now ironically, we are, well, not ironically, but we are looking into opening a bank in Wells Fargo that will help out in the future when we go back to collecting fares. We'll be able to deposit in the different locations. Right now with BMO, the closest location to where we're at, well, is in Anthony, although there is a location here, primarily due counting in either Anthony or Sunland Park. And having Wells Fargo access will assist us in being able to deposit those rapidly and have no worries there. All right, any questions regarding revenue?
Board members, any questions?
Okay, finally, under capital, this is our biggest budget amounts. We received a total of $1,156,413.37, amounting to 11.9% of the overall budget. There is still a balance of $7,607,543.60. Capital activities are progressing with focus on bus fleet replacement and facility improvements. Reimbursement cycles are being closely monitored to ensure timely cash flow. Key takeaways, financial health remains strong. Revenue recognition expected to improve with grant cycles. Expenditure management is on track with consistent pacing across categories. And capital spending slightly front-loaded but within strategic plan expectations. In closing, the district continues to demonstrate strong financial discipline and operational stability as we progress through fiscal year 2026. Our expenditures remain aligned with the adopted budget. Liquidity levels are sufficient to sustain operations and grant reimbursements are anticipated to reinforce our financial position in the coming quarter. As we move into quarter two, our focus will be on timely grant recovery, maintaining expenditure control, and refining mid-year projections to support strategic priorities identified by the board. I am very appreciative of the financial and operations team for their continued diligence and collaboration in maintaining fiscal integrity across all programs. Thank you, and I welcome your questions, guidance, or recommendations as we continue to move forward.
Board members, any questions on the capital portion of the budget or any remaining questions on the amendments? All right.
Hi, hi.
Oh, please go ahead, Counselor Flores.
So we're very healthy.
Yes, ma'am.
Financially healthy.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flores. All right, is there any other questions? If there are not, then I'll ask for a roll call on the approval of the amendments.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Nevades.
Yes.
Counselor Flores.
Yes.
Trustee Powi.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. All right, that was, I believe, our last item for approval. On the, so we're now to item number 12, which is board comments. Are there any comments from my board members? All right.
We can do the wave.
I know. All right, if there are no board comments, then we've reached the end of our agenda. It's, so we'll make a note that our next board meeting is a scheduled special meeting on November 2, sorry, November 12th, 2025, and that's due to the holiday in November.
Actually, no, it would have been.
Okay. I figured that was part of the rescheduling.
Well, we thought about that, if I may explain. So we have a contract right now for the solar array microgrid. And in fact, Rosa is here, our procurement officer. And in order to make our scheduled commitment, get all this thing done by April the 10th, we needed to award the contract in early December, November to move the process forward.
So when is the next meeting?
It'll be on November 12th right now.
November 12?
You won't have to worry about your Thanksgiving plans.
Oh, uh-huh. I was going to say.
Actually, we need to make sure we find that we can come here. So we'll have to make sure we can secure the room.
You should be able to secure the room. I think there is going to be a, there is a conflict, though, with the Masiavela MPO. So right now, I think I'll be the only, I'll probably be the only one who cannot attend. I don't think.
Is it at three, is it at one?
That one's, what do you mean, at four?
What's that?
What time is that meeting?
At 1:00, 1:00 PM. But it's not here. It'll be at city council chambers.
Okay.
So I might try to see if there's a way if Counselor or Commissioner.
Actually, we expect that it'll be a one-item meeting.
Okay.
At 1:30.
Yeah. So in fact, if anything, we'll encourage people, if they wish, to do it online, but we'll still need to have a location for the meeting.
Yeah.
You might still be able to do it.
I might still be able to do it.
Five minutes.
Okay.
Step out for five minutes.
Yep. So we'll take a look. Okay. All right. Well, like I said, if there's that, that's the end of our meeting. So if I can get a motion to adjourn?
So moved by Flores.
All right, I'll second that motion.
Second.
Oh, okay. We'll have the second there. And with that, we'll call this meeting adjourned at 2:28 PM. Thank you all for joining this month, and we'll see you hopefully November 12th. And Trustee Powi, hopefully all turns out well for that pup of yours.
Well, it's not mine. It's somebody else.